Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, December 9th, 2025. I'll call the North Liberty City Council meeting to order. Tracy, could I have roll call, please?
Libel.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig.
Is there anything else? No. No.
Ari, can you hear us and can you respond to roll call?
Yep.
Hey, folks, I don't know if I'm supposed to be hearing something, but I'm not.
Okay.
Here we go. Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes to it. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Park. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Item four is swearing in of newly elected and reelected officials. And I volunteered to go first, so it was either me or Tanya.
We lost our swearing in, sir.
Oh, yeah. We don't have this.
We gotta do it kind of off-center.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that sounds fine, too. You know how to read.
Getting out of the way here. All right.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Tracy.
Mr. President. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office.
Discharge all the duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Mr. President. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
Of the office of City Council.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
You don't have to. You just read.
Item five is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there that we want to talk about individually? Seeing none, could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do by Smith, seconded by Libel. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Item six is public comment. Now is the time for anyone to address council on something that doesn't already have public hearing attached to it on our agenda. Floor is yours.
Thank you.
Could you just reintroduce yourself for us, Artie?
Hello. My name is Artie Stoner. It's good to see all of you again and up front. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you, because I won't see you again until January, I'm guessing. All right. I have three topics that I want to hit on. The first one is I have consistently requested that the city staff and the council evaluate the validity of the zoning change for UCD East. My request has been for this review to be conducted by an impartial and qualified third-party with no conflict of interest. While I have hesitated to state my personal opinion, I do believe this situation may constitute illegal spot zoning. Therefore, I respectfully urge you again to acknowledge your fiduciary duties to the citizens of North Liberty. We are collectively invested in a $20 million commitment and to initiate a formal external review by a qualified body and not approve this tonight. Two, last week, I learned from Russ, your planning director, that it is not unusual for preliminary plaits to be submitted for approval before any submitted, before any city committee considers even a zoning change. However, given the high level of public scrutiny and significant financial investment involved in this case, I would anticipate the preliminary plat review would be postponed until after a final reading of a zoning change. Even more concerning, at the same recent planning and zoning meeting, I requested assistance regarding the flood zone shown on the preliminary plat, as I could not find it. According to Russ, the area is expected to be filled to raise it above flood plain, after which a letter of map amendment would then be submitted. However, this process concerns me, as it appears to, appears the documentation should reflect current and not future possibilities. Since the document indicated per 4A number 10 that that flood plain are depicted on that plat, they are not, that I could find, and therefore, it's in noncompliance. I recommend that this be revised and then resubmitted at a later date for approval. Third, at the last council meeting, I formally requested on behalf of the North Liberty residents that information regarding UCD project expenditures compared to the contractual document be disclosed, as these involve $20 million of public funds. $20 million, guys. Following the receipt of this, this information by email, I requested that it made, be made publicly accessible online. The information was sent to me earlier today, an additional payment of $2.9 million to Jeff Schweitzer of Nimble. He is the original founding partner that was enlisted by the city to create this project. All of you raved about him. He was the idea man behind all of this, you said. You were friends with him. And over the last three years, you cultivated this particular process and this particular development. Can we get the rest of the story on what's happening, that this is falling apart now? Excuse me. All right. According to the contract prepared by the developer, this puts the Lyons Group in default. That is according to the contract that they submitted to you. And you, under the restraints of time, were given less than one day to consider that contract before you approved it. I am asking you that you look at the relevant pagers, the developer's covenant and the default issues of 10-1A. Unfortunately, due to the timing of receipt of this information, limited opportunity has been allowed to review the documents. As of 3:00 PM, it was not even available on your website yet. I hear it is now. In the interest of transparency and public trust, I respectfully request that the city council table all votes related to UCD tonight and defer them until your, at least your scheduled January session, if not longer, to ensure adequate time for your legal, comprehensive, and some public review. It is important that all relevant information in the future is fully disclosed to the public in a timely, transparent manner, two, at open discussion meetings. Again, please table all votes related to UCD. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Artie.
Alan Chau, also a North Liberty resident. I stand to.
Microphone always gets you, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a voice. I just wanted to, I guess, approach the bench one more time, just to say that we wished that you guys would have partnered with us, because that is part of the deal. You guys stand here and you look at us like we're talking, but you don't. Your intention is to completely pass the bill anyways, pass the rezoning. With that intention, we believe that intention has been the beginning since this whole entire deal happened, because the deal happened back in March. So you guys are, I believe, in a, in a position that it's in your best interest to pass the vote, because you've already made the deal with, with, with the, with a developer. That is not integrity. I just saw you raise your hand, Mayor, you know, and to uphold the, you know, the laws of what the city is. You guys have due diligence and due process, but this whole entire due diligence, due process has been supervetted. You, you have to approve the vote in order for the deal to go through, but you've already made the deal. So you spent $20 million of taxpayers' money and then somehow pushed this deal through. What developer would ever make a deal for $20 million with the city that they have to pay back if the deal hasn't already been made behind the scenes? I mean, there's no way that that would even, even occur. I mean, I would never go into a deal unless the city somehow promised me behind scenes that they were going to push the zoning through, because the developer said at the Good Neighbor meeting that his way to pay this back is based upon high-rise apartments that have to be in there. He says there's no other way for him to pay this loan back, his exact quote. So of course you guys are going to approve this one more time, because you have to, because you have to, to, you have to provide the zoning change for the deal you've already made. That is not integrity, and I'm, I'm really disgusted with the lack of integrity. We've asked you guys to partner with us, and you have never offered a single thing that said, "I'm going to partner with you." You, you say, "Thank you," you know, "for, for bringing our attention to this," and then not a single one of you answer or even vote in the line of what you're hearing the people say. So not one of you are representing the people in this town that's being directly affected by that. Not one of you has stood up and said no to this changing, because you keep hearing us. We keep coming, and we keep coming, and not a single one of you are paying attention to what the city and the people are saying. You just ignore what we're saying, you ignore our input, and you just vote yea. Not a single one of you have listened to us, listening with intent to hear and understand, not listening and then do what Mr. Rusnak has asked you to do, because he's told you many multiple times. I've sent him two emails, and they are not part of this record. Why are things being left out? Where are my emails that said, "I don't like this"? They've never been part of this record. Does he get to choose what emails get to be part of record? I mean, there's things that are missing in here, and you're not paying attention to that. You're just passing us through. I want you guys to pay attention to what we're asking you and actually offer some kind of partnership with us, because you've not done that one time. You haven't asked us or partnered with us, had a special meeting. There's a lot of things you can do. It's all in your control. You guys should, as Artie said, pass up the vote tonight and table it tonight and have another meeting with us to meet with us and find out if there's a partnership that's available here, because you guys have made a deal, and your only interest is, is to pass it through. I said, "That is wrong. That's in nonintegrity. You guys have due diligence, you have processes, but you've supervented those processes." It is okay to superben, superprocess, some processes in order for you just to pass the bill that you want to pass through, bill or agreement. You can't supervent a process. You guys have due diligence and process. And I don't know if all that equally comes up back up to you, Mr. Mayor. Is that like, are you the one that's ultimately responsible for the due process of what's going on here? Or is that, do we talk about the non-elected officials that are like hired by city? I mean, where is this due process? It's broken down, because we keep coming to you and you guys keep ignoring us, because the ignoring is based upon every single one of your votes, saying like, "I don't care what you're saying. We're going to vote yea, because Ryan has told us to." We're asking you to table this, because you have some upset people about this. We've asked you over and over and over again, and not a single one of you have voted on what you've heard, not a single one of you. And that's very frustrating. We want to echo that frustration over and over again. There is a deal that was made outside of process. That sounds like legal ramifications. How can you guys have a deal that's made outside of due process? It's frustrating. I really do want you guys to pay attention. I'd like my, my emails that I've sent to the city to be part of due record, because they are not yet part of record. I've looked at every one of them. They're not attached. If I'm being left off, then there's probably others then, too, and that's frustrating. So please, pay attention. Please listen to us. We've asked you, and you guys come across as ignoring, because not a single one of you has said, "I'm hearing you guys. I want to partner with you." Not a single one. And I'm frustrated with that.
Thanks, Alan.
Bonnie Winslow-Garvin. I'm a neighbor here in North Liberty, on North George Street. They have, there's been some compelling legal aspects that have been presented, which I really appreciate. My viewpoint is purely personal. I want to say one last time that I'm just disgusted and disappointed in how this has all been handled. I think it's extremely short-sighted to take the last remaining old part of town. This town doesn't have a downtown. We have our legacy. There is a history, but it's not very highlighted. It feels like a brand-new town that's sprawling, sprawling, sprawling. The old part of town will never come back. If you jam another 1,000 people in there, I'm telling you, Cherry Street cannot handle 1,000 people coming up and down, and not enough parking for everybody in this high-density, high-rise thing. It's, it's gonna forever change the, the old part of town. We'll never get it back. So I don't think that that's something that we should ignore. That's our history. That's our legacy. It's important. It gives our town heart, and I think that should be considered, and I'm very disappointed in how this has been handled.
Hello. I'm Catherine Chau. I wanted to just say a couple of things to reinforce the comments that Artie Stoner made. I'm in full agreement, and that Alan Chau made. I'm in full agreement. I would really appreciate the opportunity to have this final vote tabled for tonight, because there are some significant issues that have to be addressed. There's legal, there's ethical. The, the idea of integrity has been brought up, and those things need to be addressed, and they will be if this continues without any, any respect for our input, because it really does feel like we're not getting any, like falling on deaf ears, which is really unfortunate. So that's really all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Hi, I'm Karen Johnson. I live in North Liberty, and I'm coming from a different perspective right now, and that is that I was very happy to see that the city finally acknowledged that the railroad track and that land was simply not sufficient barrier along Stewart Street. So I was very happy to see that happen, and so adequate landscaping and fencing is very important there to visually separate the commercial zone, because you're going to be zoning that commercial, commercial zone from the residential zone and from the homes in Stewart and the older part of town. The effects of all that parking, I mean, if you look at that diagram and plan, it's raised, besides the building, it's a big parking lot. So that parking lot needs to be screened. And so I think the time to consider what would be required to adequately screen that huge parking lot from public view is now, before the process proceeds much further. North Liberty simply hasn't had much experience with high-density commercial area coming into an already established low-density residential zone. So I believe that the screening necessary for this would be a high-density screen, minimum height, five to six feet. This type of screening would provide a visual and physical separation between the uses and zones. As many of you've noticed, you've got a copy of some zoning information. It comes from the Iowa City Code screening standards. If you'll look at that, you'll see that it is possible to put a zoning in that would affect this area. As you're making this zoning affect only the area between the road tracks, as you've described it, and the, and the crick, and the cherry, and zeller, this would also apply maybe just to this area, because this is a unique area. So if you take a look at that Iowa City Code screening standards, this is one of their higher screenings. It's an S3 screening, they call it, and the intent is to be a buffer treatment that uses less dense, or uses dense landscape screening to provide that separation between the uses and zones. It's commonly applied between residential uses and commercial industrial uses to screen areas, and it could be used to screen this parking. And the required materials are listed. There's alternative ways to get to it. Something like this could definitely be adopted into the North Liberty code that would make it an official zoning standard for the city. And this way, the city, the residents, the developer, they can be sure that we do indeed have zoning to address this issue and that the screening would have to be maintained for many years to come. It would have, if anything happened to it, it would have to be rebuilt. So I urge you to take a look at that. Maybe parts of this could be incorporated. They even, as you go, if you look at that zoning, they even go into various plants that can be used, and have listed out how certain plants could be used, and some plants could be changed or exchanged for others. Anyway, I hope that that helps, and I hope that you will take into consideration that it really needs to be a high-dense screening. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Are there any other comments? Okay. I'm going to take just a moment to acknowledge a few things. For those of you that are here, and you say that these comments have been unanswered, I'm sorry that you have felt that way. I will acknowledge that this process has been rather unusual, and it's by design been unusual from the beginning. This is an extraordinary development that the city is undertaking in what has been a significantly underutilized, dilapidated, and poorly maintained part of our community. The intent of this development is to make it attractive, make it useful, and to help continue to build this city and to be a thriving part of our community. Several of the questions on the validity of the rezoning, how the P and Z, or how the process of putting a preliminary plat on the agenda, the flood plain, and the expenses, those have all been answered, and all of those questions may not have the answer that you wanted, but they've been answered by staff. However, as you continue to have questions, I want you to make sure that you ask them. Russ, if you wouldn't mind, not now, but if you could please let us know of the emails that Alan was referring to, that maybe didn't make the packet. We do need to see those. And as far as your input on the community over there, I was part of the Good Neighbor meeting back in May when it happened. I was there in the room with you. And your suggestions, while they weren't entirely incorporated, have had a big influence on how this is going to be developed. The buildings have moved. The buildings have been modified. How we get into those parking, how we get into that development has been modified. Screening, your input is not for, is not been in vain, and that, we are, we are listening, and, and, and it has been important along the way. It's not the answer that you fully wanted, though, and I understand that. As you know, I'm the only one that can talk during this time. Counsel can't respond to these questions, so it's, it's my role to be able to express my views, but also hopefully the council's views along the way. I don't think there are any other questions that I have for staff aside from those emails, but I will ask council if there's anything that you would like to hear more from staff. Okay. Are there any further public comment? I'll move on to item seven.
I was going to say, did you address the question on?
I'm sorry, Artie. I have closed the public comment.
Oh, my apologies. My understanding. Sorry.
It's okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. You know what? If you were on your way, I didn't see you. Please let us know what your question is. You're here.
I just wanted to know if you addressed my question about the contract being in default.
Thank you for reminding me. That's a question. We'll get an answer to you. You're welcome. I assume one of you has written that question down? Okay, thank you. I'll now move on to item number seven, which is our engineer's report, Josiah.
Thanks, Mayor. Two, two project updates for you tonight. First, first of all, Forever Green Road and Jasper Avenue improvements, a reminder for you guys looking forward to next year. Those documents, plans, and specs will be issued for bid this month, go out in December. And so we'd be looking at a ward of construction contract, the second meeting in January, and that's for the Jasper Avenue improvements and the Forever Green Road and the roundabout. Construction is planned to start sometime in March, as soon as the weather breaks for the construction season next year, with substantial completion by the end of next construction season. The other, the other project I wanted to update you on is Forever Green Road Extension. Forever Green Road Extension is a, is a corridor project from the 12th Avenue Roundabout by North Central Middle School, and it goes east to the 1st Avenue Roundabout in Corville. That's a joint project between the City of North Liberty and the City of Corville. It's a big project overall, so it's been divided into four phases. And the cities, North Liberty and Corville, were awarded a $2.5 million earmark grant that is being utilized to build Phase One of this project, and Phase One is being administered by the City of Corville. The Phase One project has a west and an east end portion. There's going to be a portion of the roadway built by the roundabout by North Central and one by the roundabout by 1st Avenue. The construction work is going to occur during the 2026 and 2027 construction seasons. It will be an Iowa DOT bid project. So the, the check plan and final plans are at the beginning of next year, and bidding is in May of next year. So that, that's coming up. Mayor, I don't have any other updates aside from project questions.
Thanks, Josiah. The, you mentioned the Forever Green Road and Jasper Avenue project is going to take two construction seasons?
We've got substantial completion by the end of next year.
Okay.
So back roads open. As always, there'll be some restoration and seeding and stuff that'll follow up into the next spring. Yeah.
You guys have any questions for Josiah?
The Forevergreen headed east, and I think I've asked you this before, but that, all that land, we have the land we need to do that. At this point, it's just a funding, time, partnership with Corville to have that completed.
Yeah.
You want to take it?
I can take it, and you can correct me if you'd like. We have most of that land. Most of it is either existing wastewater land property that the wastewater plant has encompassed, or on the other side, Corville has purchased quite a bit. There is some, a little bit in the middle that we'll have to acquire. However, the property owners are well aware of the location of this, this, Brian and Chris, you were probably on the council, when we talked about this 15 years ago or better, maybe closer to 17 years ago, and the two cities worked jointly to establish the most efficient route to extend Forevergreen Road. So the plan is there. It's in place. The property owners are well aware of it. So there will be a small amount of acquisition needed. When we get to that point, it's mainly kind of in the middle of, of the project, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Josiah? All right. Brian, I'll move it over to you for city administrator report.
Sure. Thank you. Just two items of note tonight. You should have all received a forwarded message from Brock Grenness, who's the ECI COG Transportation Administrator, and they are doing some, taking some public input, some survey work on the I-380 Express bus, and they're looking at adding a stop in North Liberty at the, at the University of Iowa campus. This could be a, a significant, a piece to our transportation puzzle. So in that email, which I would encourage you to forward to your contacts and anyone who's listening, do the same, to get the word out and have folks take that survey and express interest for a North Liberty route. And I've asked Nick to, to, to put this information on our social posts as well. So somewhat exciting news there that they would, that they now have an option for a potential stop in North Liberty. The only other thing I wanted to mention this evening, as you may recall, after an election, the city council conducts a strategic planning session, usually in, in March or April. And so I've been in contact with ECI COG on that as well. They facilitated that two years ago. They're willing to do it again this year. It'd actually be the executive director's, one of her last formal actions before she retires, to work with this council to establish a new set of goals and, and kind of take a look at the, what's been completed over the years and, and kind of plan for a vision ahead. So looking at March, more to come on that, but just wanted to, to give you a heads up that we're talking, we'll be sharing some potential dates with you, hopefully in the near future. And that's what I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan?
Just real quick, do you know for the bus stop, how that kind of works for folks? They would, would they have to walk there?
It would be, I believe, I don't know all the details, but I believe there'd be a park and ride system at the university's place, at the university's parking lot.
Fantastic.
Certainly, you could walk there as well. And I suspect the, I'm not sure if the bus has the, the bike, you know, the bike rack on it where people can get on. I'd have to look into that, but.
I don't think so either.
Okay.
I have a question about that as well, if that's okay.
Right, Eric.
I don't, I don't want to get into weeds on it, but my understanding, looking at what they have proposed, is that this is an entirely new route that starts in Cedar Rapids, stops at the North Liberty Hospital, goes to the, the Corville Kirkwood Campus, and then turns around and goes back to Cedar Rapids. Is that, is that everyone's understanding of what this is?
It is, yes. Any other questions for Ryan? All right, I'll move on to item nine, mayor's report. I'm going to do this. Just a quick update on two things. I was able to be a part of the Coffee Connections last Friday. For those of you in the community, you may or may not know, every first Friday of the month, there's a Chamber Coffee event that, I call it a Chamber Coffee. It's not called a Chamber anymore, that happens at a North Liberty business at 7:30 every first Friday of the month. So this one, this one will need to attend. I also attended my last ECI COG meeting, speaking of ECI COG, last week on behalf of the Johnson County Metropolitan Planning Organization. And as Ryan alluded to, the director, Karen, will be retiring at the end of March. She will be extending whatever time she needs, though, to complete our planning process. It will be the only thing that ECI COG has given her permission to do beyond. They've given her permission to do things. I'm joking. She's a terrific asset. She's a former city administrator herself and has been at ECI COG now, I believe, for almost 10 years. So we're extremely lucky that she'll get to do this one more time with us. The last thing I have, and he's joining us virtually this evening, but I wanted to, I'll attempt to stand up and show everybody else here. Eric, you haven't seen this yet, but tonight would have been, and still is, Eric Sittick's last meeting as a council member with us, and we wanted to thank him with that. We'll get this sent as a gift, maybe courier, maybe Orion Hire delivery to your home, Eric. But I wanted to take a moment to thank you for your time on council. He's, we talked last week, he's heard all of these things I'm about to tell the community. But Eric stepped up four years ago when it looked like there wouldn't be somebody running for the second seat that was on the ballot. And Eric follows the city business, has for a number of years. He and his wife are both really important and active in our community. He took it upon himself to get the petition signed literally at the 11th hour, the day before they were due, and was here. It prevented us from having to go through a special election. It prevented us from having maybe a few hundred people get a friend on city council. Eric went through the process of, of getting on the ballot and was part of that election cycle then four years ago. And he's quiet. He's, he's quiet up here on council, but when he talks, the things that he's asking are important just to help drive this conversation, and we're better for him having been up here with us. And at the same note, he looked at running again, but recognized that Tanya wanted to step up, and it was, it was a lot for him to ask of his family for another four years. So with that, Eric, I thank you for your time here. Although it was short in official capacity, I know that you're going to continue to be a part of driving this, this city forward as well. I don't know if anybody else had any other comments. I'm not putting you on the spot, but you're welcome to, if you'd like to.
Well, I just appreciate Eric's input on stuff. It was always good to have, it's always good to have just some, you know, different expertise on things. And I've actually worked with Eric on a lot, a lot of things over the years, actually, when we were having a big protest about rezoning. So I've had experience in that, and Eric handled that very, very well, and we appreciate his leadership over the years.
Yeah, Mayor, me as well. Eric, I've learned a lot from you. I appreciate our, our first meeting where we sat for breakfast and talked about what, what we both enjoyed about this city and what brought us to civil service. And you've, you've been in civil service for a long time, not just your time here on council, but other, other boards, as well as filling in on the legal side as well. So I appreciate the time that you have put into our community. I know that time is not done, and you'll continue to serve in other ways. Really appreciated your leadership and push with our pantry and working on that board and seeing through a new facility. So I appreciate everything, Eric. Thank you.
You guys have done a really good job. Thanks, Eric. Appreciate you, man. It's been good getting to know you and appreciate your service. You're, you're a smart guy. And like Mr. Wason said, we are, we are better for you had been in on the council, and appreciate you. We'll see you around.
Excuse me. Yeah, I'll echo all of those comments, Eric, and just say thanks again. From our first cup of coffee to the, the different conversations we've had, the understanding different viewpoints, your perspective, your leadership, I've really enjoyed working with you, getting to know you. I don't anticipate this will be the last time we have a conversation, so I'm looking forward to that continued connection. And just from my seat, I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate all you've done for not only this community, but the, the larger corridor region as a whole. So really appreciate it, and thanks.
Eric, it just dawned on me that maybe you're, you couldn't hear anything that was just said to us. I'm hoping that you did.
I heard, I heard it all, and I don't believe it, any of it. But I hope I'm leaving, I hope I'm leaving this seat, you know, having done something positive for the city. That's, that's my hope. I've appreciated sitting up there, and I'm looking forward to seeing Tanya perform, and I know she'll do a great job. But thank you all.
Well done. All right. I'm going to move on to item 10, which is council reports. Now, this is an opportunity for council members in this abbreviated holiday past couple of weeks to let us know what they've been doing on behalf of the city.
Right. So first, I would like a shout out to the city staff. We've had like 15 inches of snow, and the roads are really good. So really appreciate all that. And then in the packet this month, the library had their little miniature report, and they had 190,000 visits to the library so far this year. So shout out to library staff. And then the emergency management, we let out the bids for a storage building in Tiffin, and actually they came in a couple hundred thousand dollars over our estimate. So we're going to figure out what to do about that, but probably see what we can do. You may have to redo the project a little bit.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else?
Just a couple volunteer opportunities. For me, I volunteered out at the Holiday Lights at the lake. If you guys haven't been out to the Reservoir Dam is right where that's set up. It's, it's really quite spectacular, really fun. All the proceeds to that go to the Birdhouse Hospice, home of Johnson County, which is a great mission. And it'll be there until New Year's Eve. So if you want to get a carload of, of people and, you know, grab some cocoa or coffee or whatever it is, and, and go check that out, that's really a fun time. And then also was able to join my Realtor colleagues ringing the bell for the Salvation Army over at Fairway, which is great to see some, some folks in the community that way, and, and a lot of generous people in North Liberty, and that's part of why I love it so much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Just for me, Mayor, just had the opportunity, you mentioned the abbreviated timeframe. So just one business leader meeting from a local representative here. I continue to push for economic development and growth, and so it was good conversation with her. I would like to take this opportunity to say congratulations to Tanya. Congratulations to Chris and Brian as well. And, and just really looking forward to working with you and continuing to work with you guys. Also, just from my seat, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, however you celebrate the upcoming holiday season. I hope it's a safe and welcoming and warm one for you. Just wanted to do that. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't, because I have every time since then. So Artie, Alan, I believe it was Low. I didn't catch your first name. I'm sorry. Was it Low?
Bonnie.
Bonnie, I'm sorry. Bonnie.
Catherine.
Bonnie, Catherine and Karen, I did catch, yes. So I really wanted to just say thank you for your perspective and your input again. And then to that end, Mayor, I also wanted to say thank you for your response and your comments as well. Your leadership here has been fantastic, and I really appreciate that. But I do want to make sure that you guys know, we are listening, and I do appreciate you offering the research, the information, the input. All does go into decision-making processes. So thank you.
Counselor Wason reminded me that we have scout pack troop, excuse me, 216 here with us in the audience tonight. So we're always glad. Did you want to say anything more?
Nope, just was gonna.
It's like welcoming.
Give them credit.
Yeah, it's like welcoming family to a meeting for you, isn't it? Yes. Okay, thank you all. I'll move on. Oh, please, Eric.
Just one, one real quick thing. I, I want to give a shout out to the Community Relations Department. The consent agenda included some items related to things going on in, in January, February, and March. And I'm really excited to see Orchestra Iowa partnering with, with the city to bring some chamber music to the Hy-Vee Center. And I urge everyone to go out and see it. It's going to be a blend of pop music and regular classical music. It's going to, I think it's going to be really good.
Great. Thank you, Eric. I'll move on to item 11 then, which is our FY27 budget guidance. And Ryan, I'm going to turn this over to you for discussion regarding the FY27 budget.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Russ, can you, you, oh, there it is. Thank you. I'll just ask you to, you can go ahead and flip the next page.
Would you mind, I don't know, you can't control the screen behind you. Okay. We got one screen.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Russ, and skip to the next page. Thank you. So tonight, really, and I think you've all been, I know you've all been through this before. What we're, we're looking at as we dive into the, the budget process for FY27 is just to, to make sure we're headed in the right direction. And, you know, over the course of a year, we, we have our goals. We have, obviously, the budget that was previously approved. We have the capital improvements plan, which was a part of that. We have a number of plans that we've approved over the years. And so we use all those tools and those documents to guide us, for staff to, to guide staff in the development of each budget. And so tonight, I just want to talk a little bit about, you know, where we've been, where we're at, and what the future looks like a little bit, and then making sure that everyone is, is generally on board with the direction we're going before we really dive deep into the conversations in January. Speaking of those January conversations, there's two dates on here that I'd ask that you make sure you have on your calendar. These are the budget sessions with, or the budget sessions for FY27. The first, on January 20th, will be with our entire management team, and that one usually starts at about five, at 5:30. And then the second will be incorporated into the January 27th regular meeting, where we'll talk a little bit more about some capital projects and a few other topics. So 20th and 27th, please mark on your calendar. Russ, go ahead and jump in. And so we, we talked about this already a little bit, just on what we're trying to do tonight, and that is really to, to make sure there are no red flashing lights here, significant concerns as we dive into budget preparation. Go ahead, Russ. So I do want to point out a couple things. I'm not going to read all this to you, but there are a few things that I think are noteworthy on here. First and foremost is the rollback, and I think you're all familiar with that term, but that's essentially the residential rollback determines how much of a residential property is taxed. So if you have a, a home valued at $200,000, you're going to be paying in FY27, or excuse me, FY26, the current year we're in, you, you pay taxes on 47% of that. In FY27, that would actually get lowered almost 3% to 44.53. And that's a good thing for those of us who pay property taxes, but it will have a negative impact on the city's budget. The other point I want to make on this page is just the commercial property, property tax backfill. And this was something that was promised to cities from the state years ago, with the understanding that it would stay in place in perpetuity. Of course, that didn't happen, and so we're going into our, this year, actually, the current year we're in, we received our last payment, or will receive our last payment. In FY27, those go away. So now, we aren't losing $343,000 this year. That's, that's our, that was our highest amount we ever received. And then over the years, they cut that by 20%. And so now this year, it'll be at zero. Go ahead, Russ. Of course, we have some opportunities, with the newest one being the local option, local option sales tax. And we'll, we'll dive into that in detail during the budget process. We'll have a couple spreadsheets and, and models for you to look at and tweak and decide what might, how, the best and most efficient way to use those funds to have the best impacts for our property owners and residents in North Liberty. And then the, the, the transit, big blue bus, we look at this as an opportunity and a bit of a challenge. We look at this as an opportunity and a bit of a challenge because while we are going to be eliminating that bus route, we want to make sure we're accommodating those folks who are currently using it. As you've heard from Angie McConville, previously, we're working on providing that option for those existing users and hopefully can potentially incorporate the I-380 Express into that equation as well. So we'll move on. Again, I'm not going to read through all these. This just kind of gives you a snapshot of some recently completed projects. And to give you an idea, these total up to just over $13 million. The most significant one on there, of course, is the Centennial Hy-Vee Center that was recently completed. But there are a lot of smaller projects on here that had some significant impacts. And if you have any questions on those at the end here, I'm certainly happy to try to answer them. But that gives you an idea of, you know, where we've been anyway, what we've accomplished. It's an impressive list of quality of life projects for the community. This list is, I would say, much more impressive. The projects we have ongoing right now, which means we've either started design or we are into construction in some shape or form. This list totals $57 million. It is a, it's a big list of projects. And of course, there are a couple of big ones on there. The two that stand out, three really that stand out are the Firehouse Construction Project, which we'll be discussing in more detail in the first and second quarters of next year. The water treatment plant upgrades. We approved a facility plan earlier this year. That's going back to part of, one of the plans we used to help develop this budget. And then, of course, Rancho Way Phase 6, our last phase after almost 20 years of phasing this project out. And that's one of the questions I'm sure many of you take and I take regularly is why haven't we done anything there yet? And that, the answer is, is simple, really. It's because it's being dictated by federal dollars. And so when those federal dollars become available for construction, we will move forward. So we're in design of that project right now. With any luck, the utilities will get out of the way and know where we're going to go next year, followed by construction in calendar year 2027. So $57 million. Projects identified in the FY '27 CIP, and I should, I should say draft CIP. And this is actually, this is taken from what was approved last year in the five-year CIP. And so we're just now, just this week, started having some discussions with our department heads, talking through these projects and others. So when we get to January, some of these may look a little bit different. But just to give you an idea, this is, this will give you a taste of some things that we may be recommending for approval this year. Moving on, going through this, this next one is, we've talked about the strategic planning and goals session. This is a list of projects that came from that. And I know the wording might be a little small up there. I've highlighted three of them here. We've made, we've made some significant progress on many of these. And we are continuing to make progress on all of them. As you all know, the Climate Goals Plan, we've approved a contract with ECI-COG. They're going to start helping us with that. We'll talk a little bit more about a public art program later during the budget process. And then, of course, as noted already, we're shifting the transit funding. The other goals on there are either completed or in progress. So I think we should feel pretty good about that. And this team looks forward to working on a new set of goals for you after we have that meeting later in March. And lastly, I just want to point out what we have done for social services the previous years. And as you might recall, well, as you can see here, the requests are always much higher than what we have to award. This, what we just approved was a two-year commitment, assuming we have the funding to make those awards. And so we'll be talking about that as, once we get those general fund revenues in and have some discussion with this group. The good news is, is, you know, we can take a year off from having to score all those applications. And then we'll be back at it in FY '28. So I'm going to, I have one more, you can hold there, Russ. I do have one more screen or one more document after this that I want to talk briefly about. But as you look at all this and you've all been a part of, you know, previous discussions, is there anything in here that we're missing? And, or thinking we need to, we should consider outside of the goals that we've talked about and some of the projects that we've got moving forward? And I'll say, if there isn't, there's nothing wrong with that because we do a fair amount of planning and discussion throughout the year and, you know, especially during that budget time. So again, it's, it's really, the idea here is just to take a temperature check. Are we okay? Anything that is obviously missing?
I can't think of anything. As you mentioned, we're part of the process pretty closely.
So I'm not sure there, anything I would add, anything. But you know, we're pretty nimble about things if we need to be, so.
We are, and that's, I think that's one of the things our team really appreciates about working with the city council is that they, everyone seems to understand in a growing city, things can change quickly and we may need to shift our attention to something else quickly at times. But the planning certainly helps as well.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the planning and the opportunity with the March session as an example. And then in addition to that, it's almost too difficult to tell right now, right? Because we don't know what the lost revenue is going to be, different things like that, if there's something to add or remove. So I think more to come, right? But just continued, you know, thanks for you and your staff and what they do just to get us to this spot.
Sure.
When you recap all the progress that has been made, it's hard to believe that that was two years ago already, you know? So that's, it's significant. So thank you.
Right, and the only thing that comes to mind, and this would be in the Parks Master Plan, would be the new park out north of town that we've discussed, you know, where there'll be some discussions on need for funding for that to move forward. Staying with parks would be Quail Ridge. There's some investment things that have gone on there with the Ball Field and some other things. Or, you know, where are we with that? And that's more conversation with Guy and your team as you enter that discussion with your directors. And then Ball Field Lights, I know has come up in that plan as well. So those are just things that come to mind that we haven't seen for a while. And I'm sure on, you know, on Guy's sheet to talk to you about. But those are the only things that I can think of. And I would default to staff and your conversations with the director team.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll move on to the last sheet here and I'll end with some good news. That's a little hard to see. I don't know if it's possible to zoom in on that or not. It is also in your packet and in front of you on the screen. And for the audience, I'll try to share what's on there. But as you know, we had our audit approved at the last meeting and we have a general fund balance that well exceeds our minimum and even maximum reserves, which is good news, meaning we spent less than we brought in substantially. And so what this is, this is showing a couple of things here. And I really wanted to give you this before the holidays so you could spend all of your break just thinking about this, and I know you will. But essentially, what Tracy and I have been talking about and plan to bring back to you is a revision to our reserve balance policy to increase the ceiling. In other words, to set more money aside. Right now, the ceiling's at 30%. We'd like to see it go to 35%, specifically because we don't know how the potential property tax changes are going to impact our budget. And we may need to rely on some of these funds to make ends meet when that happens. And then there's a list of other potential projects. I've highlighted a couple of them that are goals of the city council. A couple of other projects that we think, you know, might be good projects to use the one-time cash, one-time cash to pay for these things rather than looking at borrowing. Again, there's quite a bit to digest here, not really asking for anything other than for you to think about this. And then when we, when we get back into things after the first of the year, and frankly, after we know what the revenues are going to look like for FY '27, we can revisit this. You'll notice the very last line item there is saving or setting aside $300,000 specifically to use, incorporate in the FY '27 budget in case revenues don't come in as we expect or as we hope. So again, there's a lot there, but it gives you something to think about. And again, for those watching at home or the folks out in the audience, the baseline here is that we have about one, even with a 35% reserve, we have about 1.6 million in surplus that could be reallocated to projects that, you know, we wouldn't ultimately have to borrow for, delay for any longer. So with that, I will close my remarks and would be happy to answer any questions on the FY, upcoming FY '27 budget.
I'll say for those of you in the audience that don't have the luxury of reading on that screen what's up there, it's on page 36 when you get back home tonight. Are there any questions for Ryan?
Just the one question for me, and I, you know, want to learn more about the reserves, 35%. But a lot of times what we'll do is we'll kind of benchmark against other communities our size. I know we've done that with some staff salaries and different things like that. We make sure that that's included. I'm just curious as to more, anything else when we move this, is that in line with other communities our size? That kind of thing or not? Does it matter?
I haven't, and Tracy, chime in here if you've heard anything. I haven't heard much from others, other than when we initially established the 25% to 30% that seemed to be fairly common.
Yeah.
I think many folks going into this coming year are probably protecting cash reserves.
That's, that's kind of what, yeah.
And so while I don't have a specific number for you, certainly 35%, we don't think is out of line. Secondly, I would say, unrelated to operating budget, Moody's, as we all know, looks very heavily at cash on hand, your cash reserves. And that's one of the reasons we've been able to continue to, over the years, up our bond rating.
Rating, yeah.
And so we want to continue to make sure that's a strong point.
100% agree. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions? I'll move on to item 12, which is our FY '26 budget amendment number one. And item A is public hearing regarding proposed budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item B is resolution number 2025-136. And this is a resolution amending the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Still moved.
Second. Moved by Wason, seconded by Leibold. Are there any questions? Ryan, I queued you up for this. Would you mind just giving us a quick understanding of why we're doing these in a couple of different versions throughout a year instead of one?
Yeah, happy to. And I think, as I've discussed with the mayor, a lot of smaller cities, mid-sized cities across the state, will do one budget amendment a year. Budget amendments are not uncommon. As cities grow, sometimes multiple amendments are needed because the idea here is there are several categories within the budget. And not to get too technical or boring on you, but in each, we have to remain, we only have authority to spend whatever is budgeted in each of those categories. So you might spend zero in category A, but spend $10 over in category B. Well, they don't, you can't use them to offset each other. And so the idea here is just to make sure we're continually, that we legally have that authority. And, you know, I was going to make this comment earlier in the budget prep discussion, but one of the challenges always with municipal government, and Tracy's been doing this for 30-ish years. I've been doing it for 25. And, you know, it's, it's always, you're planning your budget in January for a budget that starts, you know, six months later and runs another 12 months. So it's six to 18 months out. And so, of course, you know, you can't, in a lot of cases, predict that far ahead, especially in a growing community like North Liberty. So this is just a best practice and you're going to see us probably start doing this multiple times a year just to stay on top of things.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Sittig?
Motion carries 5-0. Item 13 is policy regarding payables for council meeting. Item A is resolution number 2025-137. This is a resolution establishing the policy for the payment of claims due to the cancellation of the second city council meeting in December of 2025. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Smith. And just as a real quick recap, this is a way for us to pay bills that are due or that would otherwise cause us fees or default before we meet again in January?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 14 is DERS 380 Moina North Temporary Easement. And this is resolution number 2025-138. A resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement between DERS 380 LLC, Moina North Liberty, I'm sorry, Moina North LLC and North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Sorry, Tracy, I didn't catch who did it, so I'm catching that you did.
I got it.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Park?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 15 is North Stewart Street Project. This is resolution number 2025-139. A resolution approving the standard form of agreement between the City of North Liberty and Shive Hattery, Inc. for the North Stewart Street Improvements Project. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Wason. Any questions about that? It'll be an exciting project. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please? Oh, you wanted to say something?
I do. I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilor Park, for pointing this out. But I, in the memo, it talks about this project being funded through the city's street repair program. It's supported by the local option sales tax. That's my mistake. It's funded through the road use tax, not local option sales tax. As I noted, I had my acronyms messed up there. So my apologies, but this, the street repair program is something we set up probably 10 years ago now or so when additional revenue came into the road use tax fund so that we could pay for original town projects and older streets in town with cash on it.
Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 16 is Mickelson Fourth Edition Preliminary Platte. And this is item A, Planning Commission Staff Recommendations. Russ?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a preliminary subdivision platte on six acres. It's a mix of single-family and two-family homes. There's seven each. There'd be seven single-family ultimately because the RD10s are split into zero lots. There'd be seven single-family and 14 two-unit residences. Here is the zoning map showing the RS6 and the RD10. Remley Street would continue on the north side. Remley Street would continue on the north side and continue to the west, so this would extend Remley Street to the west, facilitating development to the property to the west. And the future land use map designation is urban low intensity and urban medium intensity. And just a couple of the little red circles is an area that the city council recently rezoned, just shows you where those are in the preliminary subdivision platte. And just kind of very straightforward, a street grid, again, Remley on the north and extension of the road to the south, a little bit extending over to the street, shows the drainage areas, or I should say, a lack of a pond in this subdivision, but the property would drain to the south ultimately to a couple areas, but partially into the large pond that we saw earlier this year for Mickelson Development. And we did have a Good Neighbor Meeting in conjunction with the rezoning on September 25th. No one outside city staff or the applicant attended that meeting. There's no objections to the request. And the planning commission had two findings and accepted those and forwards the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval, and staff recommends approval as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Russ. Are there any questions? Is there an applicant presentation? You had to join us for one more meeting this year, didn't you?
Had to make sure we include Eric. John Martin with MMS Consultants. No formal presentation. I'd just add that, as Russ noted, the stormwater is currently accommodated, accommodated in the existing Smigel addition, and then part of this will eventually be routed into the future basin that you saw as part of that zoning as well. And then we plan to continue to work with staff to make sure that there's adequate planning for the future subdivisions to the west and to the south.
Thanks, John. Are there any questions for John? Appreciate you. Item C is resolution number 2025-140. This is a resolution approving the preliminary subdivision platte for Mickelson Fourth Edition, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
I'll move this, Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Leibold. Any questions? Tracy, can I have a roll call, please?
Wasen?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 17 is Sunset Prairie Preliminary Site Plan. Russ, item A is Planning Commission Staff Recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a preliminary site plan, 3.22 acres on proposed lot 61 of Sunset Prairie. admittedly, this is very early on in the process. This preliminary site plan proposes 32 townhouse units and some private and public infrastructure. I would just note that final approval of this site plan cannot be issued until the final platte is approved, but this, going through this process allows them to incorporate some paving and utility connections along with the subdivision improvement plans, which we've received the first copy of, so we're currently reviewing those, just allows some efficiencies when ultimately those plans do get approved. Here is a zoning map of all the zoning areas that the council approved earlier this year. This is in the area that's RM 12, which allows for multifamily. In this case, we're seeing townhouses, and the future land use map designation is urban medium intensity, so the zoning and land use are consistent. And pretty straightforward development on the north side is Seven Oaks Boulevard. That would be the main entrance into the subdivision. We anticipate a roundabout being constructed there when we do our paving project with Dubuque Street in 2029, I believe it is. So there'd be a temporary paving situation that we're going to have to demo some areas, but the other streets would be constructed in that area. We had two Good Neighbor Meetings in conjunction with the rezoning on March 12th and March 26th, and I think the input received kind of guided some of those changes in the density along Dubuque Street. In particular, it comes to mind, it was, that density was lowered a bit. We don't have any objections to this request currently. There was one finding, and the planning commission accepted that list of findings and forwards the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. Are there any questions?
Just to comment, the pictures that were in the packet, I was excited, you know, that these, these look good, but they were saying that, you know, they were working with us on making it look architecturally, you know, and making that development look, you know, look good. So I'm excited to see what they come up with with that, but I just, you know, as of note that these aren't, what you see in the packet isn't what is going to be there.
Yeah, and I think the applicant heard the council comments during the rezoning of architectural variety, so that was an example provided from the preserve. They're very nice-looking buildings, but I believe their aim, and I think John could speak to this a little bit more, but was to, you know, really provide some, a little bit more architectural variety, just, just again, to enhance that front door appearance through our community.
Any other questions? John, what do you got for this one?
You beat me to the punch. So as we've discussed and has been stated by council and acknowledged by the developer, their goal and their understanding is this is a front door entry. It's one of the gateways to the city of North Liberty, and they want to produce something and create something that is attractive. So the pictures that you see are an example. They're committed to mixing up the varieties of where those materials are used, you know, utilize them in different ways on the exterior, mix up the color palette, you know, dormers, treatments, some of those types of things to provide that variety. Well, so the landscaping that's shown for that landscaping buffer easement, we tried to provide a mix of evergreens and ornamental trees and deciduous trees, and there's some retaining walls in there as well, so again, to try to provide that aesthetic quality as you enter North Liberty in this location.
And just to add, thank you, John. Along an arterial road, when you have residential development, we require a landscape buffer. So really what you see along North Liberty Road, very nice landscaping along the west side adjacent to that residential development is something similar that we would expect
Any questions for John? All right. Thank you, sir. Item C is resolution number 2025-141. This is a resolution approving the preliminary site plan for Sunset Prairie subdivision, Lot 61, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Smith. Any other questions?
Mayor, the only question, Ryan, is there, is there anything that we can forecast citywide as they start this project on Dubuque Street that may lead to some early infrastructure need or something, some things that we can do early so we don't have to tear out or, you know, or do other things? I just want to, I want a special eye on this as it starts, and if there's opportunity for the city to, you know, inject early to save money down the road or time or traffic congestion, things like that, I just want that kind of on our, on our docket. Are there anything like that to this point? This looks pretty straightforward, but as we get started?
Yeah, the one thing we're trying to balance, too, and we've talked a lot about this, is, you know, I mean, during the rezoning, there was a lot of concerns about construction equipment entering in from the subdivisions, and we heard that and we agree with that. And so the thought process was is to allow, you know, that entrance being on Dubuque Street, which keeps, keeps it away from the residential part, but moves it over here. You know, our construction of Dubuque Street with those roundabouts and the resurfacing is dependent on a grant, and so we're really tied to that timeframe. I wish we could move it up earlier, but I think we're going to have to wait to that. So I, I wish we could avoid some throwaway costs, but I just think it's going to be unavoidable just because we don't know exactly what that design is going to look like.
Understood. Thanks, Mayor.
Question. Are there any others? Tracy, you got a roll call, please?
Smith?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Wasen?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 18 is Greenbelt Trail. This is resolution number 2025-142, and this is a resolution accepting public improvements and releasing escrow for Greenbelt Trail subdivision Part 5, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Wasen, seconded by Leibold. Any questions? Tracy, a roll call, please.
Wasen?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item B is our 143rd resolution and final one for the year, 2025-143. This is a resolution approving an amended stormwater maintenance facilities agreement for Greenbelt Trails Parts 3 and 4, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Smith, seconded by Wasen. Sorry, Brian.
That's all right.
Leibold. Are there any questions? Tracy, a roll call, please.
Wasen?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 19 is Urban Central District East rezoning, and this is third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-22. This is an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from I-1 Light Industrial District to CUC-3, Central Urban High Intensity Commercial District, and P, Public District. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Leibold, seconded by Smith. Any last questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to add, you know, in public comment time, that is designed for a reason. It's so that the council sits and listens, does not interact, does not speak to be heard. It is really our time to listen. And to back up what the mayor, mayor's comments were on this particular topic tonight, as well as Councilor Wasen's, we have listened, and I know that it, it may feel like we're not interacting with you because of the way that this is designed. I think the mayor can attest, we've had a couple of conversations, one just after this last meeting about the topics. Ryan, in our one-on-one meetings that are monthly, have had discussions in addressing the topics that you all have brought. And so a couple of times, Alan, you've questioned the integrity of this group. To me, I have to speak to that. I've been in public service for 23 years, and I do everything of most, of highest integrity. And so while I appreciate the comments and the pieces that you, that you all are bringing to the table, I do not appreciate my integrity being questioned at this lectern. I would be one of the first to stand up and say, if we were doing anything that was behind scenes or under the table or illegal, I think my colleague, Eric Sittig, with a law degree, I would probably be first in line, and I would be a close second. So I just want to address that. I assure you that the things that have taken place with this particular rezoning in this process have been above board, they have been done with integrity, and we are making decisions up here for the betterment of the entire community. And I agree with the mayor, it's, I don't like the fact that we can't make everyone in the city happy with, with everything that we do. And it doesn't fall on deaf ears, what, what you folks in, in Old Town are, are facing with this development, but we are listening, and there have been changes made. And if there's any behind-the-scenes conversations that are being had, they're being had with us expressing your concerns in a legal way in our one-on-ones with Ryan, in a one-on-one conversation with the mayor. And the conversations that you're hearing in this public setting are being had legally and ethically, and I'll just leave it at that. I appreciate your leadership, Mayor. Thank you.
And, Counselor. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I just wanted to say that I said it previously, but looking at this, this area, I mean, I have had a number of opportunities to look at different properties in this area between looking for a new spot for the pantry and working for clients, and we don't, I mean, this, it's a difficult area. And we are here to represent the entire city at its best interests, unfortunately not just one neighborhood. And I see this opportunity to redevelop this whole area, it wasn't going to happen otherwise. And I remain convinced that the zoning proposed is the correct zoning for this area because I don't want it to be industrial. I think we have this zoning designation that fits the area, and I think that's what it should be.
Thank you, Counselor. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Sittig?
Hi.
Wasen?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Item 20 is Urban Central District Lofts Preliminary Platte, and Russ, this is Planning Commission Staff Recommendations, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is a preliminary subdivision platte on 10.18 acres. Again, we are familiar with the property, but the preliminary platte proposes six lots and public and private infrastructure on those 10 acres, and essentially each lot is being designed to house each, one building. Again, as this council just voted, zoning CUC-3 and P, and previously had voted to change the land use map to urban high intensity as well as public semi-public, and that's reflected on the map to the right, and so that zoning, zonings are consistent with the land uses. Here's kind of a, just shows the private street on the top or would be on the east side, and so I've kind of showed two perspectives and just the different lot configurations, but generally, they're not exactly rectangular, but again, each lot would hold, each lot would hold one building. And so the preliminary platte does show a landscape easement on the east side, east of that road, in a 10-foot strip area. We do have landscape standards already in the zoning code. I can, I can articulate what those are. I have them pulled up if you'd like, but we do have those, we do have landscape standards in the, in the zoning ordinance, and we would apply them in this case, so I appreciate that And then here is the landscape buffer shown, but it's, it's shown along that entire length on that, along that private street there. And here's another version showing the elevations, and again, I think it was already mentioned, but the property would be elevated outside of the flood plain, the floodway being Muddy Creek is shown on the west side. And then those two skinny rectangular areas would be the stormwater ponds, so the water would, would flow into those stormwater ponds and then rise up and then ultimately outfall into the muddy creek. And we had a very well-attended Good Neighbor Meeting on July, on July 24th in conjunction with the rezoning, and again, just listing some of those concerns that were provided. We did receive one formal objection that's contained in the, it's contained in the packet from Ms. Stoner, but that is contained in the packet. And again, the planning commission, there were two findings, and they accepted those two listed findings, and they forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. The resolution approving the platte does have language. Basically, it says effective when the rezoning is final. So since this is conditioned, assuming this council approves this platte, the rezoning would need to be final, and that is published before, before this resolution would take effect. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions for Russ?
And the next step after this is going to be then the site plans.
Yeah, so the next step for this would be, we have, we have two other steps. We have subdivision construction plans, which are reviewed administratively, but each lot, since it would have a multifamily development on it, would require a preliminary site plan, which would come, each one would come before this council, so they could show them all at once, or they could show them one at a time, but yes, you'll get another look at how each of this, how the landscaping is shown along that east side, all of those
So, Russ, with, with the landscaping and to the handout that we received tonight, is, we do have the requirements, and I have seen those requirements. Within our requirements for this particular zoning, is there high screening that is discussed or required in our current requirements?
Let me jump to that, and I'll read you exactly what it says.
What you have, the handout tonight is Iowa City's code.
Correct.
Sure you understand.
Yes. So in reference to what was given to us to, to discuss and represent, is there something in our current code with this zoning that has a high-screen requirement or not?
I wouldn't call it a high-screen. It says one shade tree or evergreen tree must be planted for every 30 feet. As part of the landscape approval process, trees may be spaced at very As part of the landscape approval process, trees may be spaced at various intervals. So they don't need to be exactly 30 feet. You could bunch them up. In addition, let's see, evergreen shrubs must be planted and spaced sufficiently to form a continuous linear hedge row at plant maturity. As part of the landscape plan approval process, shrubs may be spaced at intervals based on specific site requirements, but the total number of shrubs must be no less than one per three foot of linear buffer yard. These are, these are the buffer yards that are required when you have commercial development adjacent, budding residential property.
And so this was a hard thing for me to understand with a couple of these, and a couple impacting my private residence as well. So when we say 30 feet apart, that's at the maturity of a, of a tree. Because a, a forevergreen would, would grow to a 30-feet diameter, which, which takes a number of years for that to occur. And so I guess my, you know, my input as we look at this, and we'll be able to see more as the design comes along, is to have that discussion of what types of trees could go in here. One that are safe, but two, could be a little faster growing. And then talk about that space requirement with the developer to, you know, to get that screening that will be necessary both upfront in the first, you know, one, two, three, four years, instead of just, you know, two-inch diameter trees that take 15 years to mature. So that, that's my point, is just, is reading through that and understanding the requests that we're getting from the neighbors and wanting to see a nice full screen. So that's, that's where I'm coming from with that. Thanks, Mayor.
Welcome. Good comment. Are there any others? So any more applicant presentation? Oh, I'm sorry, Eric, go right ahead.
No, I just wanted to ask a question that I asked privately to staff about the, I mean, I drive Zeller twice a day, and it's during the busier times of the day. And I'm concerned about the access onto Zeller not aligning with, I believe it's Parkview Court to the south. I know that, that there's concern by staff, but they didn't, and I'll let them speak to that, I guess. But I guess I'm wondering what, I mean, if, if we approve this site plan with the access as proposed, if at some point we needed to control this access in some way, what would our options be? Are we limited to something like a right-in, right-out? Or are there other options that we would be able to use?
Yeah, and so to answer your question, I think we, we think lining up those two intersections would be preferable. It's something we talked about early on in the process, particularly when the proposal was for this to be a public street. It ultimately became a private street. And then it just kind of moved kind of in a linear fashion along that east property line. We look at Parkview as, as being a lower-volume street. I don't remember offhand the number of residents, but it was, it was pretty low. So it's, we don't think we have an intersection where we have two major streets coming in together. And I thought about the question a little bit as I was, it was along Cherry Street today. And if you, if you, the area east of here, Stewart Street, actually, Stewart Street on the north side of Cherry and the south side don't line up. They're in a similar configuration. They're offset a little bit. And that's not terribly uncommon, especially in older parts of communities, because development kind of happened at blocks at a time. So even in a, in a public street situation where, where you'd have a fair amount of traffic that could cut through those, those aren't lined up, and I'm not aware of a problem at that intersection. But yeah, so if that intersection was, was established and there turned out to be a problem and we needed to control that intersection, we could, we could install a median in Zeller and control that and make it a right-in, right-out for Parkview and, and this private street.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any other questions? All right. Brendan, anything else? Applicant presentation?
Brendan Pratt, Line Development Group, don't have a presentation, but happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions?
I just think the only thing is, we'll probably want to have a pretty opaque barrier there along that side.
Yeah, we, we went ahead and actually even showed something above and beyond code, even on this preliminary site plan. So we fully intend to do that, absolutely. We hear the comments loud and clear and want to be a good community member.
Did you have anything else, Brian?
No.
Okay. Item C is Resolution Number 2025-144. This is a resolution approving the preliminary subdivision platte for Urban Lofts, North Liberty, Iowa. I misspoke. This was our last resolution. Could I have a motion for consideration, please? So moved. Second. Been moved and seconded. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Smith.
Hi.
Park.
Hi.
Sittig. Wasen.
Hi.
Leibold.
Hi.
Motion carries 4 to 1. Item 21 is Special Speed Zone Ordinance, and this is third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 62 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances Concerning Special Speed Zones. Could I have a motion for consideration, please? So moved. Second. Moved by Wasen, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Leibold.
Hi.
Sittig.
Hi.
Park.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Wasen.
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0. And item 22, third consideration and adoption of our 24th and final ordinance of the year, an ordinance amending the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by creating Chapter 160 entitled Floodplain Management. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Park. Questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wasen.
Hi.
Park.
Hi.
Sittig.
Hi.
Leibold.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 23 is Old Business. 24, New Business.
Here, I just wanted to-
Oops, sorry. Thanks, Eric.
That's, yeah, sorry, the delay. I just wanted to say, and I should have said more earlier, but I do appreciate you and my colleagues on the council, the time that I've been able to spend with you discussing different things, who've always been respectful, even when we disagreed. I also want to say that I think, you know, I don't always agree with staff, and that's my prerogative as an elected official. I don't have to. But I think our staff is excellent, and I, I really appreciate all the work that they do. It's, it's, you know, I've worked with a lot of city employees. It's hard to find people like the ones we have in North Liberty. So thank you all.
Thank you, Eric. Anything else for New Business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. By Leibold, seconded by Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.